Okay, we're good.
All right, I call this public hearing to order. I would ask, you know, for anybody not speaking, please mute your mics. And as a courtesy, please introduce yourself before speaking. I'd like to recognize Kyle Flanders to read an introductory statement.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and read a brief statement. Due to the Governor's declared state of emergency due to COVID-19, it is impracticable and unsafe for the Board of Housing and Community Development to assemble in a single location, so the board meeting and public hearing will be held electronically by video conference and telephone options pursuant to the 2020 amendments to the Appropriation Act. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Board in discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, responsibilities. The public is welcome to use the link or the number that we provided to attend. The Board will make available recording or transcript in accordance with the timeframes established in Sections 2.2, 3707, and 3701.1 of the Code of Virginia. Please note, the meeting is being recorded. For anyone who wants to use them, who's in the Google Meet, there's a closed caption button at the bottom that you can turn on. If you are joining us on the phone, star six, mute and unmute to speak. All votes will be roll call votes today. And again, if you're not speaking, please mute your mic and then state your name before speaking. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric very briefly. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kyle. Welcome, members of the Board of Housing and Community Development and the public. I just also wanted to note at the top of the meeting to welcome, we have four new board members, Monique Johnson, Claudia Cotton, Mark Jackson, Sylvia Hallic, and congratulations to the reappointment of Rick Gregory. We have the public hearing first, just to have some new members, just to flow. The public hearing first this morning, then we'll roll into the Housing and Community Development Subcommittee, and then the full board meeting. And we'll have a chance during the full board meeting to do some introductions so that the new board members and the current board members can meet each other and have some introductions there. But we're gonna hold that till later after we do the public hearing in the Housing and Community Development Committee. But welcome, new board members. We're glad to have you on board, and we have some great expertise added to the board. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Chair Abasi.
Thank you, Eric. So, good morning. My name is Aisani Abasi, and I currently serve as Vice Chairman of the Virginia Board of Housing and Community Development. The Board is holding a public hearing today to receive comments regarding the proposed regulations published in the Virginia Register, September 14, 2020. Before we begin to receive comment, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. We will begin with comments on the Virginia certification standards, followed by the manufactured home safety regulations, and last, the Uniform Statewide Building Code. Please note, building code comments are limited to Virginia Administrative Code, Section 13 VAC 563 210, Chapter 3, Use and Occupancy. This is part of a correction of a potential publication error in the Virginia Town Hall from February. Final phase code change proposals will be considered in October. We will begin by calling on individuals that have already signed up to comment, then open the floor to anyone else who wishes to comment. If you haven't previously expressed a desire to comment, please enter your name and the regulations you wish to comment on in the chat box. We will also check for anyone calling in before moving on to comment on the next code. Comments offered by a previous speaker need not be repeated. The speaker may establish their position on any point simply by referring to the earlier statement which expresses his or her position. We ask, in the interest of time, that each speaker limits their remarks to two minutes. We welcome the submission of written statements. In such cases, oral comments are not necessary. The Board will review all written materials that are submitted. If you have written statements, please send them to Kyle Flanders, who's entered his email in the chat. We will receive public comment for proposed regulations in the following order. First, the Virginia certification standards, then the manufactured home safety regulations, and last, the Uniform State Building Code, Section 13 VAC 563 210, Chapter 3. I now open the public hearing and call the first speaker regarding the Virginia certification standards. Kyle?
Mr. Vice Chairman, we don't have anyone pre-registered. I don't see anything in the email, and it doesn't look like anything has come through in the chat. So, one last call. If you'd like to speak to the certification standards, is there anyone on the phones? Would like to speak to the certification standards?
Okay, not hearing anyone. Now, we would like to call the first speaker for the manufactured home safety regulations. Kyle?
Mr. Vice Chairman, there is no one pre-registered. I don't see anything coming through in the email or in the chat or otherwise regarding manufactured home safety regulations.
Okay, hearing nobody looking to comment. We would like to call the first speaker for the Uniform State Building Code, Section 13 VAC 563 210, Chapter 3. Kyle?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chairman, I don't have anyone pre-registered or entered in the chat just now. So, again, we'll make a final call to anyone out there in the meeting or on the phone if they wish to speak to Chapter 3, Section 210 of the USBC.
Okay, not hearing anything. Are there other persons wishing to speak regarding the issues for which this public hearing was convened? Okay, not hearing anybody. The hearing is now concluded. All comments will be taken under advisement by the Board. I'd like to reemphasize that any written statements received will be considered by the Board. And I'm gonna give it one more minute for one final call, asking people if anyone would want to speak on the topic set forth. And we'll give them a minute. Okay. Kyle? So, we're adjourning the public hearing portion then. Thank you. Now... Kyle, should we move on to the Housing and Community Development Committee at this point? Or do we have to wait a certain number of minutes?
We can move ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay. So, go to the Housing and Community Development Committee, and I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Andrew Friedman, who is Vice Chairman of the Committee at this juncture.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Abasi. I'm Andy Friedman, as Sunny said. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and make sure everyone's muting their microphones, and then ask Kyle to do the roll call.
Mr. Abasi?
Present.
Ms. Cotton?
Present.
Ms. Dewey?
Present.
Ms. Alrad? Mr. Friedman?
Present.
Mr. Gregory?
Present.
Ms. Hallic?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Present.
Ms. Abby Johnson?
We're not hearing Abby.
I see everyone.
I said I'm present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Monique Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Maringoff?
Present.
And Ms. Shields? Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Kyle. Our next item will be the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 26, 2020. So, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second for approval of the June minutes.
So motion.
Second. Who made the motion?
Sunny.
Sunny, okay. And second by?
Abby.
Abby, thank you, Abby. Kyle will do the roll call then.
Mr. Abasi?
Approved.
Ms. Cotton?
I will abstain as I was not present at the meeting.
Ms. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Ms. Hallic?
I will abstain because I was not involved in the committee meeting.
Mr. Jackson?
I will abstain also.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Abby Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Johnson?
Yes.
Three, huh?
Ms. Monique Johnson?
Three Johnson and a Johnston, that's really unique.
This could be fun, right?
Jackson.
That's right.
I'm sorry. Monique, could you please repeat? I missed it.
I said abstain.
And Mr. Maringoff?
Approved.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, our next item is the Enterprise Zone Regulations, which is an action item. And to inform us about that, I'd like to recognize Rebecca Rowe of the Department of Housing and Community Development to present.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. My name is Rebecca Rowe, the Associate Director of the Community Revitalization Office. Through the action today, we are seeking to make changes to the language for the Enterprise Zone Program that simply gives staff more latitude in determining how applications are received in the future. Right now, the language refers to applications being provided in hard copy. And as we saw this past year, especially around the pandemic, that's not always practicable for everyone who is applying for the Enterprise Zone Program. Also, as we have more tools at our disposal, potentially doing more of that process online, having electronic signatures and so on, staff is looking for more latitude to make some of those determinations as to how we receive applications at the staff level in our program guidelines.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. Any discussion of what Rebecca's said here about the issue? Sounds eminently reasonable. Kyle, was there something you were gonna add to that?
You're on mute, Kyle.
There we go. I think I've shared my screen so people can see the changes. It's just those two lines. We'll be pursuing this as a fast-track regulatory change, which means it will still go through a certain level of review, but since it is non-contemptious, hopefully it will be a matter of months prior to approval. That's all I'll add to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kyle. Any comments or questions? Give that a minute. Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion and a second, and then recognize Kyle to call the roll. Anyone have a motion to approve this?
So motion. Sunny?
I'll second. Mark Jackson.
Great, thank you. Kyle, go ahead and call the roll though.
Mr. Abasi?
Yes.
Ms. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Ms. Hallic?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Abby Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Monique Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Maringoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you very much, Kyle. So, the next item is new business. Eric or Kyle, were we gonna do the action plan under this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to give that update.
Okay, go right ahead.
Well, thank, thank you. So, Kyle's pulling up the appropriation status for DHCD's annual allocation, and then also the several CARES Act allocations that have come to the agency to deliver in terms of pandemic relief. One of the main roles of the Board of Housing and Community Development is to, every five years, update the Commonwealth Consolidated Plan, which puts in, is a public input process, and then finally puts in motion the priorities and strategies for the Department of Housing and Community Development to deliver multiple HUD funding. And you can see on the left-hand corner of the screen is the annual allocation that the Department of Housing and Community Development administers the programs before you. So, the Community Development Block Grant Program, you can see that's normally 18 million. It's important to note that the DHCD administers these funds for non-entitlement communities, for CDBG, so this would be the small cities programs, small counties, towns, and cities, certain populations. The large cities and counties, basically most of the urban crescent also receives separate allocations of CDBG and administer their own programs. We also have the annual home investment partnership allocation, the emergency solution grants, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPA, and the National Housing Trust Fund. So, you can see that annually, nearly 40 million in resources flow through DHCD and are administered through several programs. We do combine the home and National Housing Trust Fund. Much of the home funding through our Affordable and Special Needs Housing Pool. But we'll describe some of those programs more in depth as we go along, and we do annual updates to kind of keep the Board in the loop on the process for the awards, keep you in the loop on the allocations and projects that get funded by the Governor's Office. But you can see 39, 40 million is really what was approved back in May. And with the CARES Act pandemic response, you know, in the news that you hear all the time about the different CARES Act funds, one of the biggest pots available to the state was 3.1 billion in COVID relief that flowed directly to the Commonwealth. And those funds are being used for things like the rent and mortgage relief program that DHCD and now with a great partnership with Virginia Housing are delivering for rent and mortgage relief. But then also, you'll hear about locally, local rent and mortgage relief efforts and local different efforts on COVID relief. It's important to note that these CARES Act funds are different than that 3.1 billion. They are administered by HUD and flow through DHCD or local governments. So, the Board, we've received three tranches of CARES Act funds, and the role for the Code of Virginia for the Board of Housing and Community Development is to advise DHCD as we, as we state the annual strategy statement. So, every year, that 39 million that was allocated back in the earlier part of this year, that is part of our annual strategy statement, and we updated the use of those $39 million in funds. Since that time, as the tranches of HUD funds have come out through the CARES Act, we've had to move, update the annual strategy statement, and have provided email updates with our proposed uses to the Board of Housing and Community Development. And then also have done public input and have held a public hearing as we updated the funds. For the context of the past usage, that first CARES Act, CV1, that 10 million for CDBG, the urban localities received a direct allocation. That 10 million has been utilized for urgent need applications for small business assistance, homelessness assistance, things like food security assistance that localities have applied for directly from our agency and are implementing. The emergency solutions grants was also, the annual strategy statement was also amended for that 10 million that you see under that column 2, CV191. And that has been a really critical funding to assist with rapid rehousing, assistance with our pandemic response for people experiencing homelessness. So, the beginning of the pandemic, the Governor set aside some state funds, received some assistance from FEMA as well. We were one of the first states to immediately work to make sure that our unsheltered population and people in shelters where there was difficult socially distance could go to hotel meltdown. So, we've had non-congregate shelter efforts in partnerships with the continuum of care for the regional efforts to focus on serving people experiencing homelessness. So, those ESG grants and CDBG1 have been, that HUD contract has been executed, and the state has those funds and is deploying those funds. Under the third column, you'll see CARES Act, CV192. And so, we also, another update to the Board previously allocated and had the public hearing on ESG Round 2. So, that's 20 million that was, again, working on the rapid rehousing, working on finding, using best practices to move from the non-congregate shelter to permanent supportive housing, to rapid rehousing for people experiencing homelessness, which is not only less costly to the Commonwealth and our local partners, but also best practice for households, individuals in those situations to get into permanent housing with the supportive services to follow. That 20 million also is available to us to use for non-congregate sheltering as we move into the next calendar year, where there are less COVID relief funds at the local and state level, through that bigger pot I spoke about, that 3 billion in COVID relief funds that are more flexibly used by the Commonwealth, its agencies and localities. So, that 20 million was also approved, and we are under contract for ESG Round 2. The memo we're wanting your advice on and to consult with the Board, or which is the last two tranches, are under the third column, that CDBG, CV Round 2, that 20,246,816. And then also the CDBG Round 3, which is 10,991,109. So, that roughly $31 million is available in a new way to the agency to deliver. Typically, the funds have to flow on an application basis to non-entitlement communities through DHCD. And with the Round 2 of CDBG nationwide, the states receive that $20 million allocation or their equivalent for every state, based on their per capita and some of the COVID impacts in each state. So, it's, that 20 million can be used statewide and can also be used through, it do not have to go through application by application from each locality. It can create statewide delivery networks. And another important point to note is these CDBG funds and ESG have a spend deadline of September of 2022. The COVID relief funds, that 3.1 billion I keep referring to, those funds have a spend deadline of this December of 2020. So, the states and localities are on a, you know, moving quickly to deploy that 3.1 billion. And so, the rent and mortgage relief program we have in place, again, with our partners, 30 grantees and Virginia Housing, in delivering a landlord approach, those funds do have to be spent by the end of December. But these funds here do have a longer spend deadline and have some comparable uses to many of the different COVID relief funds. The 10.9 million of the Round 3, the last CDBG allocation there, that was, and if you can mute your phone, we're hearing some dog background noise. If you see that 10.9 million, that is, funding did go to the state for, and can be used in any part of the state. Some of the urban localities also did receive, the entitlements did receive that Round 3 allocation of the CARES Act funds. So, I think a couple of things to note, big picture, is that you can see typically we have $40 million flowing through our agency from HUD funds. And you can see that with the CARES funds now, we have, in essence, around $71 million in additional funds. So, nearly double our normal allocation on top of our normal allocation to deliver and to deliver quickly in ways, whereas a lot of our annual allocations go out construction funds for affordable housing, for water, wastewater, other types of infrastructure with a longer spend line. A lot of these funds in the CDBG CARES categories are going out for public service needs, urgent needs, procuring things quickly at the local level to deliver pandemic response. So, what we're, have proposed, and I'll, Kyle, if you go ahead and go to the next slide. We have proposed using that 20 million in Round 2 of the CDBG CARES and the 10 million in the Round 3 to utilize first for continuation of rent and mortgage relief. We still have to work through the, with our partners and grantees, the differences that the current rent and mortgage relief program, which is under the COVID relief funds that have to be spent by December, the differences with the CDBG Round 2 and 3 funds in terms of some of the different rules that apply. But they can still be used for rent assistance. And again, the goal being, and we've worked with the, to get approval from the Governor's Office and, you know, what uses they wanted for this CDBG Round 2 and 3, and the rent and mortgage relief program, having that program in some form still in place for households and landlords facing eviction or foreclosure as we move into the new calendar year was, is a priority of administration. And so, that's, that is what we're proposing, is to use Round 2 and 3 for rent relief. And then, also, we've put in that action plan, annual strategy statement update, the flexibility to, to use, to accept applications for urgent need if, you know, if we don't need it all for the rent relief aspect, for the rent and mortgage relief program. So, the urgent need component of that memo refers to really how we're utilizing CDBG CARES Act Round 1, which is application-based by localities for specific needs and homelessness and, and small business relief and in food security being the main things we're seeing from localities. But that annual strategy, by updating and giving us flexibility to prioritize rent relief and then have that secondary ability, gives us the ability to get under contract with HUD, to get the Commonwealth, the funds available to the Commonwealth to begin deploying and to have things in place as COVID relief funds. the funds available to the Commonwealth to begin deploying and to, to have things in place as COVID relief funds get near the December deadline. We do have a, HUD has 45 days to respond and they have been moving quicker than that, but we want to make sure we do this now so that we have it in place moving forward. Again, the vision for this is that the majority of these funds would come in place once the COVID relief fund closeout happens and we have to move forward with, with utilizing other funds such as CDBG to continue rent relief. So you can see the, the timeline before you and, and basically the posting the update to the action plan, the public notice, the public hearing on October 7th. And then our hope is to submit to HUD by October 8th so we can begin the process of accessing these $30 million in funds. I do want to especially take a moment. I know we have Pam Kestner on the phone, our chief deputy, and also our acting director for our housing division. We have Jay Grant, our deputy director for our community development division. Their teams have really stepped up in the pandemic to with, we're staffing up as much as we can with some of the new federal administration funds, but they, their teams have been working, you know, double time to get these funds out and to not only deploy these allocations, but the COVID relief funds, particularly homelessness assistance and the rent and mortgage relief program. I do want to also thank at this time, and we'll, we'll get into more of the rent and mortgage relief program update later, but I want to thank Susan Dewey and her team at Virginia Housing. They have really stepped up and, and moved quickly to create a landlord approach, the rent and mortgage relief program as well. So that program was funded with 50 million in COVID relief funds that, by the governor that have to be spent by December 30. We have started that program with 30 grantees across the state, serving each one or multiple localities. And, and they stood that program up in, in a matter of, our team and the local grantees in a matter of weeks. And, and really at this point have, have delivered 7.2 million in, in funds and helping thousands of, of households stay in their homes and keep their landlords whole during the pandemic. And really, some of the feedback we heard from landlords was really the, the desire to also create a landlord approach. And the governor's office and legislators heard that too, so that landlords can be a part of the, the team of helping application with their tenants and collaboratively working to access rent and mortgage relief. And so Virginia Housing has, has created that approach. We also had Virginia Supportive Housing partnering with us in the early phases of, of the effort to, to pilot that approach. So I'm, I'm sure Susan may have more to talk about with that later or now as well, but we are, we're excited that Commonwealth are going to be postured to really keep ramping up that assistance. And again, it's a, it's a big interest of the administration and us to keep people stably housed during the pandemic, but to also help landlords and stay whole during this time. So I think, I, I think I've covered the, the majority of what we hope to, to share. And Pam is on as well to, if there's any questions about the timeline or the action plan process. But at this time, Mr. Chair, I want to turn it back to, to you to, you know, have a dialogue with the board and, and hear, hear what people are, are hearing in the, in their districts and also in their, their line of work on the pandemic response and, and see if there's any feedback about our proposal. And we don't need, Mr. Chair, there's no motion necessary or a formal resolution on this. We just want to get input from the board and get their, get all of your advice, whether it's right now or if you'd like to talk with us as well after about any input on this proposal.
Great. Thank you very much, Eric. I'll, I'll just start by giving, I think I said this in June, also my compliments to you and Pam and your whole team for really incredibly quick action on getting these funds out to communities. We, we experienced that in Virginia Beach and it's really made a big difference. And I'm glad to see the proposal to add the 30 million to the rent mortgage relief program because I think our experience is that the rental housing crisis is going to be longer term rather than shorter term and that there's going to be a lot of need into next year. So I think that's a really good thing. So I'll open up to committee members. Anyone wants to ask a question or make a comment about this?
Mr. Chairman, this is Monique Johnson. I just have a question for staff. So Eric, I know that for that first tranche of CARES Act money, contracts have been executed and that's being deployed. I'm just curious about like what percentage of that first 10.9 million is, has been deployed?
Sure. Excellent question. So that first 10.9 million, one thing to note on that is that the usage for that, for urgent need is that in our normal 18 million dollar allocation plus any unobligated that we've moved into this fiscal year or, you know, money that was returned for projects not fully completed or where they didn't need the full amount, we repositioned and began our urgent need applications for localities where again, the majority of the funds were homelessness assistance, food security and also for small business assistance. And that was one of the main requests of localities. So of the 10.9 million, I know Jay is on the phone. I think it's around, there's around 4 million left to be obligated of that 10 million. And, and on top of that, I don't have it right in front of me, but we, we obligated around another 10 million of our, of our norm allocation for urgent need. But I want to, I'd love to actually give the board a full update on the uses of CDBG and show all the projects to you all. So if it would, would work for you at the, at the next board meeting or, or December, I know our next October board meeting is, is going to be very code, building code heavy, but I'd love to give you an update on all those and I could also send a supplementary that shows you all the allocations that have been awarded by the governor's office. We have several that are still under review by the governor's office. We review and then send a decision package to the governor's office to approve these. Jay, did I get the numbers about right there? And we can, can definitely follow up with the full awards.
Yeah, that, that sounds about right, Eric. And also there is to Monique's question, there is a dollar spent versus dollars obligated. And our team has been obligating funds and essentially for the first tranche, the obligations are covered, although those dollars have yet to be spent. But certainly in a detailed report, we could provide you a very specific.
Yeah, that's a key point, Jay.
Thank you. I'm just curious about.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I was just going to say that that will be helpful. I'm just curious about trends and, and in those, as these pots of funds are either deployed or committed, just what we're seeing across the state in terms of, you know, where the highest needs are. So I think that kind of report would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to just add, Mr. Chair, on that one, that much of that, to Jay's point, we're obligating those funds, but many of our localities are in the same posture as the state agencies that they want to spend the COVID relief funds first by that December deadline. And since these funds have a longer spend deadline, in many cases, localities have small business assistance, food security, small homelessness assistance. And you know, it depends on what that local city council or board has done in terms of whether they're going to use their COVID relief for one or the other. So to get the full picture, it's really with that CDBG Round 1 for what, what the needs are, it's, it's, ours is a snapshot, but the larger amount of funds were allocated by the Secretary of the Finance. And, and so our spend rate is going to be lagging the COVID relief funds because we're, we're definitely letting localities know you should spend your, your COVID relief first. Make sure we get that spent by December as a Commonwealth. And then in many cases, these CBG funds will be using to continue different items. There are some exceptions, things like, you know, Amherst County utilized allocation to help change manufacturing planters. I mean, there's, there's different things like that where the, the CDBG is allowed to, has been helping pivot manufacturing and other things for COVID relief. But, but we're happy to give you a fuller update and at one of our upcoming board meetings and we can send out, you know, the projects awarded to date.
Great. That would be great. Thank you.
This is Brett. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Can you also talk about the mechanics of how the dollars are going from, are getting administered from the state out to the localities? Just how that's working? How it's been working? And then also the plans for Phase 2 and 3, if there's going to be any changes or not?
Sure. The, the Round 1, we have merged with some of the, the annual allocation and that's been on an open submission, so rolling application process. We, you know, we, we basically have been working and, and have had a pipeline of projects from localities, working through the Virginia Municipal League, the Virginia Association of Counties, the Planning District Commissions Association, and gain the word out to all localities about this opportunity through the economic developers, the COCs, trying to get the word out about this, this flexibility of CDBG Round 1. So it's open submission process that, that we work through and have, I think at this point, had seven decision packages go to the governor's office. So we're getting them approved on a rolling basis with, with them. And then we're, you know, while we're through that approval process, getting the contracts ready so that we can execute quickly after the final approval by the governor's office. So that's Round 1. Round 2 and Round 3, we are proposing and have the flexibility to utilize the rent relief component of CDBG to flow through the rent and mortgage relief program. We have some, the, what your, what the approval of and public input on this is really the, the usage. And in terms of the mechanics, we're still kind of working through and we're going to need to get serious input from our grantees and the, you know, Virginia Housing, others about how it will work best, given that these funds have a little bit of a different rule set than the COVID relief to, to get those out, not application by application from localities, but to make sure we continue to have statewide rent relief coverage. I think it's important to note that that's part of why the governor stood up the rent and mortgage relief program. Some states have left it up completely to localities and many of our localities stood up rent and mortgage relief very quickly in the pandemic. And others, you know, didn't have that infrastructure in place already. So we want to make sure that there's a statewide, no matter where you live in Virginia, that this assistance is available. And so, so the mechanics are still to be determined, but it would not be locality by locality. It would be a a process to ensure we have state, statewide rent assistance is the, is the.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, this is Abby Johnson. Can I ask a quick question? Yeah, thanks. So in terms of the, and that was a really great explanation, Eric. Thank, thank you for that, that detail. I guess I was just curious about, we're using this 2 and 3 to help continue the mortgage relief program. How will, what percentage of folks that have been helped to date will continue to be helped? Is it going to be a kind of the same level or less or more? Because I don't know exactly how much we're, we're giving out now. So is it going to kind of help everyone the same way into the next year? With these funds?
So Abby, that's a great question. I think one thing to put that in the, in the broad context is that the governor has advocated for 2.4 billion in rent relief for Virginia and over 600 million in mortgage assistance. So the need on this is, is huge. And, and so the, the House of Representatives did pass and, you know, as there's been debates on the, the next CARES Act, the next stimulus, the House of Representatives did pass $100 billion in rental assistance. And that, that is equivalent to the 2.4 billion that, you know, Virginia roundabout would receive. So the potential for future rent assistance from the federal government and the scale of it is, is large. And so you know, about half the states have already begun to stand up their own rent relief programs. Some states don't have that or they, it's a hodgepodge of local programs. So a long way of saying the future of rent relief, there's some uncertainty about how large the assistance will be moving into the new year. Obviously, we got the presidential election, potentially changes in Congress, Senate, potentially the same. So that is all being debated at the federal level. What, so that, that question of what happens there will determine a lot of what we can do in the new year. With the, with 30 million, you know, we might, we may need to do some changes to really focus the program in on, you know, the most vulnerable and, and have some more limits. Right now, the governor's been very clear, the 50 million was a down payment and that there could be additional COVID relief through December. And so right now, we're trying to get out as much of the funds as possible to households in need of assistance. But, so we're in a little bit of a different posture with having that, a potential for that fund. Those funds. If we don't have additional federal funds moving into the new fiscal, new calendar year, then to your point, you know, we may need to adjust some of the guidelines on this. Right now, for instance, we're paying April 1st onward, if, if there's the COVID impact to, to households' income, they're at 80% or less of area median income and 150% or less of the fair market rent. We're paying 100% of that rent from April 1st to date. And we changed those guidelines recently. And, and so the money has started to really flow with that change. At the beginning, we, we tried to do a half match with landlords and, and really that, that wasn't, that wasn't working the way we had hoped. So we, we're trying to be flexible. Here's take our input on the tenant and landlord side. And so right now, our posture is to get as much funds out as possible. And, and Virginia Housing has been critical to scaling up that, that ability as well as our grantees and, you know, Pam is and team are about to roll out a call center to have back office support for surge capacity with rent mortgage relief. But that's a, a long answer, but to basically say, bottom line, that will depend on how much additional federal assistance comes in in the new year and what happens in that space. There will be some uncertainty potentially there until we get into the, post the election.
Thanks, Eric. That's very helpful.
Thank you, Abby. Other questions? Give it a second. Okay, Eric, thank you for all that. Any closing remarks you want to make about that?
I just, thanks for those really good questions. Please, you all, you know, all come from different districts in the Commonwealth, different parts of the, the state. So please keep us in the loop as you're hearing things or getting feedback on, on any of our programs, obviously, but especially as you're hearing on the pandemic response. There's, things are happening quickly. So thank, thank you for the input and thank you for the, to the DHCD team for the work on this.
Yeah, I second that for sure. Okay, so is there any other new business to come before the Housing and Community Development Committee? Okay, not seeing any at this point. I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Is that the right method, Kyle, or how do we do this? Yep. Okay. Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. This is Sonny.
Thank you.
I'll second. It's Brett.
Thank you both. Okay. Do we need a roll call or do we consider ourselves adjourned?
I think you can voice vote this one.
Okay, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment of the Housing and Community Development Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Turn it back over to Sonny.
And Kyle, are we ready to go to the main meeting?
Yes, we are.
Great. So I called the meeting of the Board of Housing and Community Development to order. I would ask, you know, just to reiterate, folks, please mute your mics if you're not speaking and introduce yourself prior to speaking. With that, I'm going to ask Kyle to do a roll call of the membership.
Mr. Abasi.
Present.
Ms. Cotton.
Present.
Ms. Dewey.
Present.
Ms. Elrod. Mr. Farrell.
Present.
Mr. Friedman.
Present.
Mr. Gregory.
Present.
Ms. Halleck.
You may be muted.
Ms. Halleck. We'll come back to that one. Mr. Jackson?
Present.
Ms. Abby Johnson?
Present.
Keith Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Monique Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Maryoff?
Present.
And Ms. Shields. And Ms. Halleck, are you?
Hi, this is Halleck. Yes, I'm present.
Great.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. With that, I would ask if any member of the public would like to make any public comments, please enter your name in the chat at this time. Kyle, have any members entered, or has any member of the public entered their name in the chat? I do not see any. Anybody on the phone that is not on the audio portion of the video call interested in making comments, please speak up, and I'll give it about 15 seconds. Okay. Kyle, it looks like nobody's interested in making any public comment. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda portion of the meeting. The first is an approval of the minutes from June 26, 2020. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the June, June minutes and a second.
A motion.
This is Sean. I'll second that.
Okay. I heard a motion and a second, several seconds. So I would ask Kyle to move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Abasi.
Approved.
Ms. Cotton.
I'll abstain as I wasn't at the meeting.
Ms. Dewey.
Approve.
Mr. Farrell.
Approve as submitted.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes, approve.
Mr. Gregory.
Approve.
Ms. Halleck.
Abstain.
Mr. Jackson.
Abstain.
Ms. Abby Johnson.
Approve.
Mr. Keith Johnson.
Approve.
Ms. Monique Johnson.
Abstain.
Mr. Maryoff.
Approve.
Mr. Vice Chairman, the motion passes.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to ask Eric to do new member introductions. Mr. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the public hearing, we're excited to have four new members and, and also for Rick Gregory's reappointment. And so we thought it would be, you know, it's strange in this digital platform, but we wanted to give a chance for all of you to get to know each other just briefly at least, and, and see the faces pop up of, of your new members and also the current members. So that, I would ask that we'll, we'll just go around the, the virtual squares here and, and have folks just know your name, and then also where you, what, what congressional district you're representing, where, where you live, maybe just a little, something quick about your professional background and, and interest in serving. So we'll try to keep that to, you know, about a minute per person, but we thought it'd be worth the time for, usually we'd all be getting to know each other in a, at the Virginia Housing Center or one of our board meeting rooms here at the DHCD, but we thought we would do that today. So I'm going to go ahead and, and go around the, the virtual squares here, but I'll, I'll go ahead and use the, the roll call list so we can make sure we don't miss anyone. So again, let us know your district, just your name, background, and, and where you're from. And as you all know, some, some of you represent congressional districts supported by the governor, others have specific slots on the board for the Code of Virginia. So, Mr. Abasi, can we start with you?
Sure. So my name is Asani Abasi. I am, I've been involved in the mortgage space for a number of years. I'm in Northern Virginia, Tyson's Corner. It's Congressman Connolly's district. And basically, I'm in my, I guess going into my third year on the board. For the last year, I've been vice chairman, and my congressional district is 11, in case people didn't know which one was Connolly's district. And so I started off my career as in-house counsel at HUD, FHA. And then, like I said, I've been in the mortgage space for, for a number of years, including about 11 years at Fannie Mae. And now I'm a general counsel of several mortgage companies in, in Northern Virginia. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Now Claudia Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I am from the third congressional district, Congressman Scott's district. I live in Suffolk, the northern part of Suffolk, which hasn't always been in the third district. It was in the fourth district for many years. I'm currently CEO of the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association. I've also worked in local government, both in planning and economic development. So I have a keen interest in everything that happens on, on this board. And I am pleased to be serving. Look forward to meeting all of you in person and appreciate meeting you virtually. Thanks.
Thanks, Claudia. Welcome to the board. Now we have Susan Dewey.
So good morning, everyone. I'm Susan Dewey. I'm on the board as the CEO of Virginia Housing. I've been there 21 years in that role. And we, of course, partner very closely with everyone from DHCD. A lot of our housing programs work together very well. We were created back in 1972 as a self-supporting authority of the Commonwealth. And we run, we have everything to do with housing, both homeownership programs as well as rental programs. We run the tax credit program and several other programs that I'll update you on as we go forward. But welcome to the new members. I know a couple of you very well. One of you may have worked for Virginia Housing in the past, and a couple others I'm really getting, looking forward to getting to know. So welcome.
Thanks, Susan. Appreciate that. And Mimi Elrod is not able to join us today. Mimi is the, a former mayor of Lexington and, and represents that portion of the state. And so hopefully you'll get to meet her at a future meeting. Next, we'll go to Sean Farrell.
Good morning, board, and welcome. Mark, Monique, and Claudia, and Sylvia. Sylvia, I've worked with you before, so I look forward to working with you again. And everyone else, I look forward to working with you in, in the future. Again, I'm Sean Farrell. I am representing the Virginia Building and Code Officials Association as the Director of Regulatory Compliance. The Virginia Building Association is, is an association of building officials across the state of Virginia. So I represent all the building officials and building official perspectives for the state of Virginia. Full-time, I'm a commercial project manager for Prince William County, and I handle commercial projects from cradle to grave or from concept to occupancy. I also teach for the State Code Academy, for DHCD, for all the maintenance codes in the state of Virginia. And I also help essentially draft and, and write code nationally for the International Code Council. So in a nutshell, that's my background. And again, I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Sean. We appreciate all you do on the code process. And Sean and Mr. Johnson's roles on the board are in the code. And so having both the building code officials perspective and their technical expertise at the table, as well as fire officials with Mr. Johnson's spot is one thing for you. I know we mentioned new board members, but it's, it's really invaluable to us, the staff as well. Next, we'll go to Andy Friedman.
Thanks, Eric. I'm Andy Friedman. I'm the Director of the Virginia Beach Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, which is a kind of a unique integrated housing agency where we operate HUD entitlement programs, we do code enforcement citywide. We are the lead agency for the homelessness continuum of care. We are also the regional housing opportunities for people with aid administrator. And we also work closely with our regional city and housing authority partners on homelessness and other things. I've actually been with the agency for 34 years. I've been its director for 27. And I've been involved in statewide groups, pretty much all of them, Housing Virginia, Virginia Housing Alliance, Virginia Association of Housing and Community Development Officials. And this is my, I guess, my third year on the board, starting my third year on the board also, and appreciate working with a great group of people, staff, and board members. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Now, Rick Gregory.
Thank you, Eric, and welcome to all the new board members. I started my career as General Counsel for Bank of America, heading up their real estate divisions, and since moved on to private practice where I practiced law for essentially 30 years. And during that period, I started a real estate development company called Links Ventures. Our main focus is on tax advantaged economic development projects, which include opportunity zone projects, pretty much a concentration in affordable housing and the LITAC program. And I think that's it. Thank you. Oh, I represent the seventh district, Abigail Spanberg.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate all you do. Now Sylvia Halleck.
Good morning. I'm really sorry that I had to join by phone because I actually brushed my hair and got dressed for this meeting, but here I am by phone anyway. I represent the fifth district. I live in Croze. It is currently Riggelman's district, but we have a hot election coming up here pretty soon. My first career was in education, and when I retired from that, I joined Habitat for Humanity. I was the first hired, hired hand in Southampton Roads, first hired director, and helped to create the state office. And not intending to take the job as, as the director there, but as it happened, I, I did. And I'm very grateful for that because I got to know so many of you. We, we helped over 1,000 families in the Commonwealth during that period. And I want to thank again DHCD and Virginia Housing particularly for their support through those 20 years.
Thank you, Sylvia. Welcome. Appreciate your, your past work with us and glad to have you on the board. Now we have Mark Jackson.
Thanks, Eric, and opportunity to serve on the board. I actually represent the ninth congressional district, Morgan Griffiths District. I actually work for Community Housing Partners, one of the housing companies based here in Virginia across seven states. And I oversee all the energy side of things for our organization from our international training center based in Christiansburg, Virginia. We train weatherization and building science folks across the globe, along with all of our low-income federal weatherization programs and utility programs. And I'm also Chief Operating Officer for international nonprofit called Weatherizing South Borders, and we take the idea of weatherizing low-income homes globally to help start those programs across the globe. I've been working a lot in Latin American recently. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mark. Look forward to having your expertise on the board as well. Thanks for, thanks for that overview. Now we have Abby Johnson.
Thanks, Eric, for that. Just want to welcome the four of you to the board. It's exciting to have you all and your expertise here. So looking forward to getting to know you all. A few of you I have met before and looking forward to serving together. I represent Congressional District One, which is the greater Williamsburg area with Rob Whitman as our congressman. I also am a liaison to the Virginia Housing Board from DHCD. Just a quick background about, about me and what I hope to bring to, to the board, have been bringing to the board. I have a background in architecture, architecture and urban design, and moved and working in commercial real estate for a number of years in the financial side primarily. In the last 10 to 12 years, I decided to focus that finance background and commercial real estate into doing, helping commercial real estate developers and affordable housing developers institute green building measures, energy efficiency, renewable energy measures into their buildings. As part of that, I've been involved in something called Property Assess Clean Energy for the last seven and a half years, and bringing, working with local governments here in Virginia to bring this energy efficiency program to these localities. And that includes also resiliency, which is something I know is one of the issues we'll be discussing next month. And so I really am looking forward to having affordable housing incorporate measures that will really benefit those communities, both energy efficiency and resiliency. So that's it for me. I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person one day.
Thank you for that update, Abby. And I'm glad you mentioned, for, for you new board members, we mentioned orientation, but there's two, two board members who serve double duty on two boards, state boards as a part of their role at, at DHCD. So Abby was elected by the board to represent the board at the, on Virginia Housing, on Virginia Housing's Board of Commissioners. And so big time commitment there. Appreciate you, you doing that, Abby. And then also Rick Gregory was also serves on our board, but then as a representative of the Fire Services Board. So those, just to keep in mind, those are two, two roles that are part of the, the board and opportunities for engagement. And we'll, we'll talk about that before we do the, give it overview again, the board on the different opportunities to, to serve. So thank you, Abby. So now we'll go to Keith Johnson.
Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to all of our, our new members. I look forward to meeting you in person again. My name is Keith Johnson. My current role pays my salary is I'm the Fire Chief in Loudoun County, Virginia. I'm a fourth generation firefighter that has 37 years in the fire service. And I represent the Virginia Fire Service Board, which is a governor-appointed board that I serve on. And in reference to that, I'm on the Board of Housing. I also am First Vice President of the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association. And all willing, in February, I will take over the president seat of the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association. I think this is my third year on the board, and I still am certified as a fire inspector and fire investigator, although my job really doesn't let me go out in the field much anymore, do those kind of fun things. But, but anyway, I look forward to working with you all. I'm probably the least knowledgeable on housing issues, but I can tell you in the three years I've been on the board, I learned something every meeting. And I learned that it is an incredible, affordable housing and housing issues are incredibly important around the Commonwealth. And again, I just look forward to learning every meeting about the issues at hand. And, and really, I learned from all of you as Farrell board members. So I appreciate that. So thank you. And look, again, look forward to meeting you in person.
Thank you, Keith Johnson. We appreciate you and bringing that liaison with the Fire Services Board. So now we'll go to Monique Johnson.
All right. Good morning. My name is Monique Johnson. I currently, well, I'm from the fourth district, McKeachan's district in the city of Richmond. I currently serve as the Chief Operating Officer at a small nonprofit called the Better Housing Coalition. I have worked in the affordable housing and community development space for about 20 years. I'm a civil engineer by trade and kind of cut my teeth in this space, working with TK Samanov 20 years ago. So I've had an opportunity to work at Virginia Housing. with TK Samanoff 20 years ago. So I've had an opportunity to work at Virginia Housing with Susan, and also Virginia Community Capital. So I've had a kind of expansive career in affordable housing and community development finance, and also in affordable housing development. So have worked pretty closely with DHCD over the years, and really excited about this opportunity to work in partnership with you all.
Thank you, Monique. We're really fortunate to have your expertise on the board, and thanks for joining us. We welcome you. And we are, I'm glad we're going to have three Johnsons and the Johnson. It's good that we're, I had a high school graduating class of 100, and we had five Eric and about six Johnsons. So it all works out.
Eric, we're going to get you to take that T out of your name, Eric. That's all.
If you make a formal motion and adopt it, it probably will become Virginia, you know, regular.
So do we need a motion to have a Johnson Caucus on the board?
As long as it becomes officially a global board, Kyle will be okay. So now we'll go to Brett Marangoff.
Good morning. I will not be going by Brett Marangoff Johnson. I'm going to stick to my name. So this is the beginning of my second year. Welcome to all the new members, by the way. It's been great so far, very fulfilling. I represent the 10th District. Congresswoman Wexton. I live in McLean, and that's in Fairfax County. My career has been spent in the affordable housing business on the development and finance side. I currently work for a company called Fairstead, and we are an affordable and workforce housing owner, developer, operator, with a portfolio of close to 13,000 units across 14 states. So we are seeing a lot of what's going on all around the country. You know, very excited about the things that the board is doing, as well as Virginia Housing, to focus on rent relief and really trying to, I mean, that's an emergency response effort, but also focusing on affordable housing as a mission. I think it's a national crisis, and I'm excited to be part of the board and help do what we can.
Thank you, Brett. Thanks for all you do for the board. I'll say that in addition, we have Patty Shields, who is from Falls Church, and she was not able to join, but that is the one last board member. So the only board members that were not able to join today were Mimi Elrod and Patty Shields. So hopefully you'll get to know them as well. And as you can see, we have a lot of, we cover a lot of different topics and policy areas with this board, and we have a really diverse board in terms of, obviously, geography, but in terms of expertise. And really, it helps us all. This is intended to be a governor-appointed citizen group that helps, and then also with our members appointed through the code process for their expertise, I mean, through the code with Susan, Chief Johnson, and Sean's roles, to really advise and approve various regulations, the billing code process being the major process, but then also major processes related to funding, as we saw on our first topic of discussion. And then also some other programs that we implemented at DHCD that are state-funded, such as Enterprise Zone, Industrial Revitalization Fund, Private Activity Bonds. So appreciate having this diverse set of expertise and experiences, and thanks for taking the time to share. I did want to note that our four previous board members, we will be recognizing and honoring their service as well at a future board meeting to have a resolution from the board. Steve Simones was, he was at the end of his term in the 9th District, and so we definitely send his regards, and we'll get a time to, hopefully easier on the virtual, to get him back to thank him for his service. Helen Hardeman is now serving on the Housing Commission, so the Governor's Office appointed her to the Housing Commission. And Earl Reynolds from Danville, he was really, the COVID response in the video is really was pulling him away, so he also, we will honor his service. Jeff Sadler was our fourth member, and he also, with some of his professional work, had to step away currently, but really, we'll honor all four of those board members as well for their service. So I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for the next board item.
Thank you. And so the next item is annual election of chair and vice chair, and I will turn it back over to Director Johnson to conduct those elections.
Great. Thanks, Vice Chair Bassey. So before we start the election of chair and vice chair, wanted to give the board, Vice Chair Bassey and Mr. Friedman, we talked in advance of the meeting and thought it, we have a lot of new members, thought it really helpful to just give you a sense of the process and what we're doing here, and if people have any questions before we go into the election. So basically, by every new fiscal year, so the first meeting after July 1 of the Board of Housing and Community Development, we annually elect the chair and vice chair. You all elect as the board members, the chair and vice chair. So I start that by calling for nominations for the chair, and then the newly-elected chair, then does an election for the vice chair. So that first meeting, the fiscal year, members of the chair and vice chair can be reelected every year. There's not a term limit to that, but that is something that every year the board decides. The other piece to, you know, let everyone know about is that we do have multiple opportunities for, leadership opportunities for the board, and so we want to, you know, make sure that the leadership and members, let myself and let the elected leadership know about the various committees or opportunities that you'd be interested in the future or even right now. So the couple of the opportunities to remind board members of is that the chair, the elected chair does appoint several, the majority of the other officers that serve on the board. So for instance, the Housing and Community Development Committee that we've met this morning, the chair appoints the chair of that committee, and then also has the ability to appoint a vice chair as well. We have recently had a chair and vice chair. Helen Hardeman was in that role, and since been appointed to another board. But that's, those are two potential opportunities for the chair to elect a leadership position. The other main committee of the board is the Codes and Standards Committee. And so that committee, the chair also elects, appoints the chair of the Codes and Standards Committee. Historically, that has been the vice chair of the full committee, but that is the prerogative of the chair. And then another really critical committee is the statewide fire prevention code development committee. So we have a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Housing and Community Development and the Fire Services Board in terms of adoption of the fire code. And so that board is composed, it's basically a three-by-three. There's three members from the Board of Housing and Community Development, and then three members appointed by the Fire Services Board. Currently, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Bassey are members of the statewide fire prevention code development committee. And then the new chair would also appoint a third member to that board. And again, that's typically the chair of the Codes and Standards Committee. That's important always to know that, but especially as we move into the October meeting, you'll be hearing an update from Cindy Davis, our Deputy Director of Building and Fire Regulations at DHCD later. But that committee will meet in October, and we'll go through the, you know, you'll see in the packet and then the timeline, the various boards, including the statewide fire prevention code development committee and the Codes and Standards Committee, that meet before the Board of Housing and Community Development meets and makes those decisions on the consensus or non-consensus, the different votes on the code process. And you'll have a full, we'll have a full update on that later. So those are the, those are the three main committees, Codes and Standards, Housing and Community Development, statewide fire prevention code development committee. And as I mentioned earlier, there's also the position that Abby and Rick Gregory in, in terms of serving on other boards that are close partners with this board. So at this time, I just want to see if there's any questions on the leadership opportunities, the board process, that, and then before I move to open the floor for nominations of the chair. So any questions?
Eric, this is Andy. I'm not sure I heard, but does the board elect the vice chair? Is that appointed by the chair?
The board does elect the vice chair. So those are the two positions elected by the board today. First, the chair, and then the board elects the vice chair. And the newly-elected chair presides over the election of the vice chair.
Thank you.
Eric, this is Sean. Not a question, but I did want to make a remark so that the new board members have awareness. In my role representing the Virginia Building and Code Officials Association as the Director of Regulatory Compliance, I do not believe that I am eligible to chair the Board of Housing, and I do not think that I am eligible to chair either one of the subcommittees for the Codes and Standards and the statewide fire. So if you could confirm that, that would be excellent. And I'm not sure if Keith is in a similar position with regards to his representation, but it might be worthwhile for the new board members to have that understanding.
That's correct, Sean. So that was Kyle. He confirmed that that is correct, Sean, for Sean and Farrell and Chief Johnson's roles.
And does that apply to Susan Dewey as well?
So I know that specifically for Sean's roles, and I would have to double-check on Chief Johnson and Susan's roles.
Any other questions? Okay, well, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and move into our election of the chair. And so I would like to call nominations for chair of the Board of Housing and Community Development.
I'd like to nominate Sunny. This is Brett.
Okay, I have.
This is Sean. I'll second that.
Okay, I've heard from Brett in nominating Sunny and Sean in seconding that. Are there any additional nominations? Okay. Hearing none, before we do the roll call, I have a nomination for Sunny Bassey as a proper second for Sunny Bassey as Chair of the Board of Housing and Community Development. Are there any additional discussion or questions before we move to a roll call vote? Okay, Kyle, call the roll for that motion to elect Sunny Bassey as Chair of the Board of Housing and Community Development.
Mr. Bassey?
Yes.
Ms. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Ms. Hallack?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Abby Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Monique Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marangoff?
Yes.
The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and I appreciate the entire Johnson Caucus' support as well. So Eric, I guess I'll conduct the vice chair elections, or will you conduct that?
Yes, thank you. You will, Mr. Chair, and congratulations. Thanks for your willingness to serve.
Thank you. So I'll entertain motions for nomination for vice chair. Can I, I can nominate, right? Or am I not in a position to nominate?
Kyle, is that?
Yes, I believe you can nominate, Mr. Chair.
I nominate Brett Marangoff for vice chair.
This is Sean. I'll second that.
Okay, we have one nomination for vice chair. Is there anybody else wanting to nominate? Anybody? Give another second. All right, hearing none, we have one nominee. Kyle, if you can please call the vote.
Mr. Chair, call for any discussion if, on the motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'd ask Kyle to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Bassey?
Yes.
Ms. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Ms. Hallack?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Abby Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Monique Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marangoff?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Now we have a chair and a vice chair. And Eric, I think I'm going to go ahead and exercise the chair's discretion to make some appointments. Kyle, is there a formal process for that, or do I just go ahead and indicate who the appointments will be?
Mr. Chair, you can just go ahead and indicate who the appointments are. There's no formal action item.
Okay, so I'd like to appoint Andrew Friedman as Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee. I don't see Andrew, but if he accepts the appointment.
Thank you. I accept. Appreciate that.
And I'd like to nominate Brett Marangoff to the Chair of the Codes and Standard Committee.
Yes, I'll accept. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd also like to nominate Mr. Marangoff to the three-by-three Fire Services Committee.
Yes, I'll accept. Thank you.
And then Kyle, there's two more appointments to the Fire Services Committee that have to be done now, or we can hold it, we can ask for volunteers. What I would ask is if, you know, anybody else is interested, as Eric mentioned, you know, please reach out to Eric on any of the committees that he talked about. So, you know, in the last year, we had a vice chairman of the Housing and Community Development Committee. You know, I guess we have, what, two more appointments, Kyle? Is that right, for the Fire Services Committee?
Mr. Chair, there's currently members sitting, but the appointment is at your discretion as to who.
Okay, great. So as soon as those sitting members' terms expire, but please reach out to Eric if interested. Eric, did you want to make a comment? You unmuted yourself.
I was just going to say what Kyle said, that currently on the three-by-three with your appointment of Brett is that also Sean Farrell and you are currently on the three-by-three as well going into the October meeting. And we can, like you mentioned, committee members can let know, us know if there's interest in additional appointments, and there's that open slot on the Housing and Community Development, like you mentioned.
Okay, great. So I think that completes the election and the appointment process. And, you know, the next item will be for the newly-appointed chairman, Andrew Friedman, on the Housing and Community Development Committee, to report out from the Housing and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I might need some guidance on the report out, but the action item to report out, Kyle, is there? the action item to report out, how, Kyle, is there a thing beside the action item and the new business that I should report out on?
The, the action item is the one thing that the full board needs to take action on.
Okay.
Any other updates, it would be at your discretion.
Okay, so, uh, the Housing Community Development Committee at its meeting today adopted proposed, uh, modification to enterprise zone regulations that would provide broader, uh, opportunities for how applications are submitted and reviewed, um, for those enterprise zone funding rewards. Maybe that should be clarified by Rebecca or Kyle, but that was the main action item, the one action item.
So this is Sean. That comes out of committee as a motion. We don't need a motion, so I will properly second that.
Great. Um, and, uh, Kyle, if you can begin a roll call vote. If there's, is there any discussion on that? Anybody have any comments? Not if Kyle, you could begin a roll call vote.
Mr. Abasi.
Yes.
Ms. Cotton.
Yes.
Ms. Dewey.
Yes.
Mr. Farrell.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
Mr. Gregory.
Yes.
Ms. Halleck.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Abby Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Keith Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Monique Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Marangoff.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes the report of the Housing and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And I think we're going to move next to the code cycle update. And I would recognize Cindy Davis to provide an update on the code cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, welcome to the new members. It was good to talk to each of you, um, and I look forward to meeting you all first as well. Before we, um, talk about where we are in the code process currently, I wanted to give everybody a little bit of a background as to where everything started and bring you up to date, um, just as a point of reference. So the code update cycle started in early 2019 with a notice of intended regulatory action in NORA. And then that was preceded by, uh, work group meetings and sub-work group meetings that ran through April to August of last year. Um, in addition to the regular work group meetings, we had a number of sub-work group meetings. Um, and for the new board members, sub-work group meetings typically occur when there's a, um, a single issue topic that needs to be discussed with, um, specific interested stakeholders to try and develop proposals uh, that can come out of that group as a consensus for the full work group. During this code cycle, we had a number of sub-work groups, and those included, um, a school safety, uh, sub-work group, resiliency, sub-work group, residential dock safety, sub-work group, an energy, sub-work group, uh, residential use groups, sub-work group. Um, and then we also finished up the statewide fire prevention code edits, which, um, was removing retroactive construction requirements out of the SFPC. Um, so, so all of those work groups met from April to August of last year. In September of last year, this board considered individual proposals. Um, and then once those decisions were made, staff incorporated those proposals approved by the board into the proposed regulations. Those were approved in December and published in the Virginia Register on February 3rd. And typically, that starts the final phase of the process. But, uh, then almost immediately in March, as we know, uh, everything changed. Um, COVID hit, and so there was a pause put on for several months. The original public hearing that was to be, occur in March, um, was postponed until the end of June. Uh, we postponed the work group meetings, uh, for several months as well. So everything got pushed back, um, a, a few months. Uh, but we did then, uh, start the work group meetings up again virtually. Uh, and we have continued to, um, meet and discuss proposals. Uh, and those proposals, uh, bring us to where we are right now. Um, and we will, this board then will consider individual proposal items that have been a result of the final process, the, the proposals that came out of the work group meetings, um, this year. And that's what you all will see next month, um, at your board meeting. So, um, after the October board meeting, you will then, um, staff will take each of those proposals, um, as approved or denied, um, as appropriate, and incorporate those into the final regulations. And then you will see those final regulations at your board meeting in December. Once those final regulations, um, are approved, they will then go to the governor's office, um, and obtain a statutory authority letter from the Attorney General's Office, be published in the Virginia Register. And pending any petitions, we anticipate an effective date of the 2018 codes, uh, probably somewhere mid to late next year. So once everything is finalized, we will begin publication of the new codes for distribution. And that brings us up to date. One of the things that I did want to mention to you all, um, it, it's not really, code related per se, but it, it's been an issue that's been brought to our attention by a number of our stakeholder groups. Um, and that is the skyrocketing cost of building materials. Um, so we have been watching that carefully and gathering information. This seems to particularly affect lumber costs.
Yep.
Um, and anecdotal evidence, uh, that's been provided by some of our stakeholders indicate, for instance, a, a factory, um, I believe in North Carolina, getting a load of lumber, uh, the, oh, sheets of OSB for this manufactured housing factory went from $7 a sheet to $28 a sheet. Uh, so, so the costs are, um, the costs are increasing significantly. And we have been discussing internally at DHCD with community development and the other divisions on how this is going to impact the programs and ability to, to serve our clients. Um, and we're working hard and we're keeping an eye on it. But it doesn't look like, um, the prices are going to reduce anytime soon. Um, so we're watching it carefully. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report. Um, and I'll entertain any questions that anybody might have.
Yes, and, uh, Cindy, no, no question, just a comment. I reiterate what you've said because I track the lumber prices. And, um, I know that there's been a real, there's been a downtick for the last few days, but generally, the uptick has been substantial, and the uptick is, is, uh, inclined to, uh, come back. Any other comments or questions?
Do you have a question, Cindy? This is Monique. Um, yeah, yes, I have one question. Um, so, so Cindy, given what you just said about the lumber cost, um, can you just provide some insight into how that might impact the work of this board? I mean, that information or how, I'm just trying to kind of get a sense of, uh, I, I understand in our work that it's, it has an impact, but just what would that mean in terms of our board's role?
Um, so that's a great question. And I, I think that perhaps Deputy Director, um, uh, oh my goodness, terrible, uh, Jay is going to be able to answer that a little bit better for you, uh, because, um, internally, our discussions have talked about the specific community development projects that exist that support, uh, redevelopment, um, efforts and how, how the costs, the cap costs of those are now not going to go as far as they would. So Jay, are you still on here? Can you address some of the programs and how those might be impacted as we discussed the other day?
Uh, yes, I am, Cindy, and, uh, thanks a lot. So what we're seeing right now is primarily, uh, difficulty with our housing rehabilitation networks to, uh, to complete projects. So oftentimes, uh, we'll award a grant and maybe a contract is secured at the beginning of a project. That securing of, uh, of contracts secures prices for that period of time. But projects may take several months, uh, or even longer. And as we're seeing right now, you can basically secure prices for about seven days. And so when they're looking to complete a project, all of a sudden, project prices skyrocket. We have one example, I think, where, um, a housing rehab project, which generally speaking, per house, we, we may be talking about 30, 40, $50,000. Uh, the price went up by $14,000. And so the net effect is that we will be able to complete fewer projects. Um, on top of that, uh, many of you know that we have a longstanding issue with, uh, with finding readily available contractors, uh, that can do the work in this realm. So we're looking at creative ways right now where we can not only, uh, beef up the number of contractors available. So there's a short-term issue there. We're looking at the long-term issue, uh, of trying to create a pipeline for the next generation of contractors, uh, while at the same time addressing this, this immediate issue of increasing costs. So we're having some very, uh, current conversations about how can we, uh, potentially help our, uh, rehabilitation partners? Uh, and this goes for many different programs. You've heard about CDBG, but we have other programs such as indoor plumbing rehabilitation, uh, the home program on, uh, Pam's side of the house in the housing division, um, and a few other programs, acquire, renovate, sell. Uh, so we're looking into, again, very currently, uh, how can we help these partners, uh, under those programs to secure costs, uh, hopefully at lower prices as these prices continue to rise?
Thank, thank you, Jay. Can, can I ask one follow-up question?
Yes, we can.
I'm just curious, so, but on the, the policy side, so I understand on the programmatic side, what kind of impact that'll have particularly on the partners we work with throughout the state? Um, and then I'm just kind of curious, like, so, so on Cindy, on, you know, is there anything from the policy perspective that this may influence? Or is it really just kind of, it's going to influence the work on the programmatic side?
So this is, this is Eric. If I could, um, take a step at that, this is a good, really good question. So, um, really, um, you know, Cindy and I had talked, uh, just briefly before about, about this update, and really, it's a general update. Um, but since Cindy was giving the update, was giving the code cycle update, I had asked her to go ahead and, and give this information item. So it's not really an information item related to the code process. And then, like you said, uh, in, in essence, a much of the, the cost here related to federal trade, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things more going on nationally to address the cost piece, but we wanted to make you aware of it. To the points that, uh, Jay mentioned, uh, um, most of those kind of things that we can do would be programmatically on guidelines and other things for the cost limits. Uh, but, but it's a good question. But, I mean, I will say, overall, just in our work with Virginia Housing and DHD, we have, one of the areas we have really focused on, um, not really in terms of a, a board-related change, other than, um, there's been some things in the code process to look at building technologies and look at, uh, a, a lot of the, the technical experts have thought through ways to make the code, uh, more flexible in terms of different types of construction and other things to help, help with, um, with dealing with building technology as a potential solution, manufactured modular homes. Um, you know, uh, Virginia Housing's done a lot, uh, in, in promoting some of the, the new modular construction, like the shipping containers. So, um, so that, that, I think that would be the main thing related to policy is, is, is a lot of the work that goes in the subcommittee and the code development process on Virginia trying to be friendly to different building technologies and, and having different types of construction materials that still get the same safety, but, you know, give, um, the, the, the building, the development community some options in a, in an era of, um, really changing prices. So I hope that helps with the, kind of what you were asking. Okay, thanks.
Great. Uh, any other questions from anybody? For Cindy?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Sean. Cindy, how quickly, uh, in advance of our October meeting will we receive the information for the totality of code changes that we'll be reviewing?
Uh, so, um, a- as is typical, we, we are striving to make sure that you have everything at least 10 days prior. Um, we're putting together all, all the final packages right now and plan on meeting next week to, to try and finalize everything and to develop memos and timelines and information and all the background information that you will be helpful to you in order for you to make your decisions in October. Kyle, do you have any additional information that you want to share with the board related to, uh, background information on the codes?
No, just a, as a logistical note, um, I'll, I'll send something out, but if you would like a hard copy, um, need to know in advance if at all possible.
Oh, um, and if I could just follow up with that one thing, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't encourage everybody to go into CDPVA, the code development process, Virginia, because you can see everything that's in there right now that's pending, that you're going to be looking at next month. You can look at all the public comments that have been submitted. So everything is already right there. It just is not compiled into a book for you yet. And if you need help, information on accessing CDPVA, um, just reach out, uh, myself or my staff will be able to, happy to help you, um, get that link and, and get logged on.
Yeah, that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The, the Jeff Brown just added that link as well to the chat. And, and I, and for the new board members, I know Kyle had mentioned too, we have all the minutes and, and all the, the last board action that you can review on our website of, of what's gone on before. I do, uh, but, but over the past couple of years, I do want to just reiterate that any current or, um, new board members, we're happy to do some two-by-two meetings just to, to give you briefing and ask-answer questions in that week. Um, you know, especially, I'd recommend that week that you have the board packet. And so if you know already you'd be interested in that, we'd be happy to set up some time and, and make sure we can through it. It is, it is a lot of material, um, but we, um, be happy to do that for you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Sean. Again, no, no questions, but I would be remiss if I, uh, didn't take this opportunity to, uh, express my appreciation to DHCD and, and Eric and Cindy and, and all the staff for all the work that they've done, uh, through this code development cycle, particularly the challenges that we faced in moving to a, a virtual platform. You folks have just made it very seamless and, and, uh, just amazing work to you all. So congratulations. I know we're not through it yet, but congratulations on.
I, I would reiterate that. Thank you to the staff.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Um, anything else, Cindy?
No, nothing.
All right, great. Going to move on to reports and information. Um, so the first report is Ms. Dewey from the Virginia, Virginia Housing Report.
Thank you very much. And, um, I wanted just to start off by talking a little bit more about the rent and mortgage relief program that Eric mentioned. And, um, as he said, this started off with a program that, um, was primarily geared to tenants applying. And I think as it moved forward, there was a request to have the landlords be able to put in an application that included, um, many of their tenants. So we are working at Virginia Housing to stand that up now. And thanks, uh, really to Eric and all of his staff. Um, they've, uh, done a great job, the two teams working together. So that program launched last week. And, uh, we do have a wealth of information, so we're really trying to encourage participation. Um, because it, at least on the portion because at least on the portion of the program that initially has been funded with CARES money, that only goes through December. So we want to make sure we try to get that money out as quickly as possible. So again, Eric, thanks to you and your staff. And we look forward to rolling that money out as fast as we can. Two other things we're working with DHCD on, and that are two legislative studies. Eric, are you going to be talking about those in your report? Because I will defer to you if you would like to. Are you reporting on those?
I can, Susan, but if you want to cover the the state tax credit, so you all put the, you know, the large, most of the effort into that. So feel free to go ahead and start.
Okay. So one of the studies was House Bill eight ten. And that particular bill was sponsored by Delegate Jeff Born. And we put a task force together. We didn't have a lot of time, as you know, with COVID. Kind of changed our plans quite a bit, but we did a virtual task force. They did a great job in putting together a draft of a report that was sent as required beginning of September to the Governor's Office and also to Secretary of Commerce and Trade. And what that was requiring was to look at the possibility of having a state tax opportunity credit, which would somewhat pair with a federal low income housing tax credit that we administer at Virginia Housing. And so it was a great group. They certainly had some ideas about a state program. We looked at what was happening around the the country and other states. And so a recommendation was made that would be the state version of the federal program. There was also an alternate promote program that was proposed as well as a home ownership tax credit potentially. Those last two, really, we didn't get a chance to explore those as much as we want. So I think there'll be more work to do on those as we move forward. So at this point, that study report has gone to the Governor's Office. And so we'll be working with the Governor's Office to determine what the next steps are as we move forward. And of course, as you know, when you're looking at any resources for housing, it also needs to be really, I think, viewed in light of what goes into the state trust fund and other programs because we want to make sure we're maximizing all the resources of the Commonwealth as best we can. The other thing I'll mention is you probably have been, some of you may not be familiar. We changed our name some months back from VHDA is what most people refer to us. And now we just are using Virginia Housing because we think it more clearly expresses exactly who we are and what we do. And we have a new logo that goes with that. So if you hear us talking about Virginia Housing, that's us. But a lot of people still say VHDA, and that's us too. So we answer to all those names. We're working on our strategic plan right now. And we are focusing on a couple of key areas. One is really on how we make sure we are promoting inclusive communities as we move forward. So looking not just house by house, but really the wider community. We're also focused on revitalization of public housing. And there are a lot of challenges in that space, as some of you know. But we're really hoping that we can use a lot of our resources to promote better housing for people that currently are in public housing. We also are trying to close the gap on minority homeownership. And we'll be working with a lot of our partners to help us find new ways to address ways in which we can reach out to minority communities to further homeownership and wealth building. And a general overall focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion is at the heart of a lot of what we're proposing. So I think that pretty much wraps up what I planned, other than I want to give a shout out to Abby Johnson and thank her for being on our board. We enjoy working with her. And some of the new members may not realize that while I'm on this board, Eric is also on the Board of Virginia Housing. So we appreciate the service and the support that both of them give to Virginia Housing. That completes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dewey. Any questions for Susan? Sorry, was that a question? Okay. We're going to move on to the report of the Virginia Fire Services Board by Member Gregory. Rick?
I really don't have anything to report of. For health reasons, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. But I did want to bring something up that I thought was important in the meeting that we had in Help me out, Keith. I think it was February, March. And it was right after the the Democratic candidates debates. And I told everyone at the, in the Board of Fire Services that I felt a little bit like Joe Biden, where everyone was going after me. And I think it kind of showed that there has been a history of controversy between the two boards. I assured them that, I think there also was a misunderstanding about how the organization of the two boards worked. I assured them that I wanted to be there as a person to allow them to have a conduit between the two boards. Keith is able to do a great job. And as I told him, Keith does a marvelous job of advocating their position. I welcomed any members of the board to give me a call personally to discuss issues that they had so that maybe we can bubble up these issues and work through them instead of having the comments and so forth happen at our meetings with, you know, only the stakeholders only having two minutes to give a public statement. So I think that was well received, and I think it was timely and needed to be said.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add a little bit. Sure, Mr. Mr. At the February meeting, we've had a meeting since then, which I'll go over a few items that Rick couldn't attend. But Mr. Gregory did a great job. And, you know, him and I are in kind of unique positions, obviously representing the fire service and the Board of Housing. And and we work well together as we all do on this board. And I think Rick, what Rick was trying to articulate was that, you know, if it's a fire service issue, it pertains to all of us. I mean, and if it's a building issue, it pertains to all of us. There's not one side versus the other when it comes to issues pertaining to Board of Housing or the fire service. We're all in this together. And and this is a very influential board, is a board of housing, certainly. And so is the Virginia Fire Service Board, two very important boards led by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Riley, who really have a yeoman's job of overseeing housing in the Commonwealth and fire safety and fire protection in the Commonwealth. So we're all in together on both boards. So I think he did that, and it was it was great to hear him step up and do that. With that, we did have a meeting in June of 2020, since that meeting in in February. And I know what we're working on now is an updated, the MOU is very outdated since 2012. It hasn't been updated, the MOU between the Board of Housing and the Fire Service Board. So we're in the process, Travis Rickman, who's our, kind of our liaison for the Virginia Fire Service Board, is is updating that MOU and the policies and regulations. So that will eventually come back to the Board of Housing, I would imagine, in some type or form of recommendation for approval for that. And there was a lot of discussion on, excuse me about that, a lot of discussion with the Virginia Fire Service Board about burn buildings, that there's new regulations for burn buildings that have that have been put in place. And we're talking, we're talking millions of dollars worth of improvements to have our training burn buildings updated. We are lucky in Loudoun, we just did ours at a cost of less than a million dollars for ours. But there's many throughout the state, so that's a big cost that many localities are going to have to absorb to continue to use their burn buildings with that. So that was a big discussion, and there were some other minor things. We do have an upcoming meeting on October 1st, and then the full board meeting is on October 2nd. We also are going through, at this October meetings, we'll go through election cycle for our offices as well. So that's upcoming, the end of the week. So I think that's most of my highlights. Thank you.
I really appreciate the update. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Or any comments on Mr. Gregory's comment? Okay, so that's the Virginia Fire Services Board report. I would turn it over to the report of the Director, Mr. Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Susan, Rick, and Keith for those updates. I will, you know, follow those updates to say that I I've been really pleased that the collaborative process with the working together on the fire code and the fire code edits. And so I know that the staff of both agencies have been working together well and closely, and the and the stakeholders have been putting a lot of time into that effort. So and, you know, I think for the new board members, in the in the past, we've had some orientations and had Chief Riley, and who's is my counterpart at the Fire Services, over and had our staff interact and have lunch and all in the past. You know, there is, there's a, the the great thing is that we just have a lot of good passions from all the stakeholders and at both of our agencies. And so we, that collaborative open partnership is really important. So appreciate Rick and Keith for your your partnership and sharing information amongst each other. And so thanks for that update. And I do want to thank Susan too. You know, Virginia Housing is, you know, our our key partner agency. And we work, we work with pretty much every agency across state government. Virginia Housing is a independent public authority, but but really is a part of our team with the Secretariat and us too, and working together on all the the key housing issues that that we face in the Commonwealth. Susan gave a great update, and her team put a lot of work into the state housing tax credit study. And so, you know, expect more of that debate in the next session of the General Assembly. The other study that she she referenced that I wanted to give the board a a quick update on is that House Bill eight five four was from Delegate Murphy, Northern Virginia. And also Delegate Lopez had a comparable study that got wrapped into the House Bill eight five four. And this was a very broad request of the Virginia Housing and DHCD to work with stakeholders on a a large kind of study overall on housing. Have a large scope, looking at housing affordability, availability, looking at multiple issues related to topics that the General Assembly wants to take up. And we were happy to, in a future meeting, as we get closer, go through that. I think the key thing to note right now for the board is that the the Governor's Office did provide additional year extension on that study. There was some budget language allowed, extensions on on key studies like this. And and really, the 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 main reason was that both of our agencies were in the middle of the pandemic response. And that really, the the landscape has changed and and some of the focus of how this may have been written back in February as opposed to now. We, Susan and I and our teams really, the Secretariat really wanted to add a focus in the study on the pandemic impacts and pandemic learning and and the post kind of impacts on the housing industry and housing affordability. And so and and also look at racial equity and add that component. Those two big components are a huge part of what we're looking at in housing across the nation and in Virginia. And so so that study will have an extra year, and we're we're working together as agencies on a on a work group to, of stakeholders to work on that. But it is, it is in the planning process right now at the agencies, and we'll keep you informed on that studies as we go along. For those who've been on the board a while, we, it's similar in scope to the Housing Policy Advisory Council that was worked on during the McAuliffe administration. We had a couple of times where we were providing updates to the board. And and we'll likely be getting some really good information out of that study to help us us as a board, but also help all of our stakeholders in the in the General Assembly and Governor's Office in in housing policy moving forward. So so wanted to update you on that. The other quick couple of updates, we've talked quite a bit about the rent and mortgage relief program. And so I I'll just reiterate that 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 is something that is a, is our, one of our top priorities right now to really get assistance out through that program. We also, I also want to reference the StayHomeVirginia.com website. So Susan's team, Susan and her team came up with that idea. And we have really embraced that at DHCD as well and and helped with different components of, especially on the evictions and the homelessness assistance side of of the website. And the Governor's Office has has kind of made that our public facing information for simple language on what is a really change, ever changing and complex housing law landscape. And Kyle, if you could, if you could just type up the StayHomeVirginia.com in the chat box for folks. And and it's also in multiple languages. For instance, you know, there's a landlord page, there's a renters page, there's a people experiencing homelessness page. And then there's a, I think I said renters, homeowners, landlords, and people experiencing homelessness. And so for things like the eviction moratorium, changing constantly with the Governor's Office asking for extensions on that from the state court, state Supreme Court, and that that no longer being a state court, the the state Supreme Court did not grant the Governor's request for an additional eviction moratorium, but the federal CDC order came into effect. And so that, for instance, on the renters page, there's information about the the CDC moratorium. And and the the key, though, is that we continue to message that the importance of of landlords, tenants, homeowners, our banking institutions, all knowing their rights and responsibilities and communicating those, and that we're trying to work together on the the rent and mortgage relief. Is that's, you know, the key to help both in in the current environment to keep people in their homes. So definitely recommend the StayHomeVirginia.com website. And you, there's, it's, we've tried to make it as plain language as possible. We definitely get a ton of questions about the CDC order and rent and mortgage relief at our agency. That are our top two questions right now. So we'll we'll continue to, and happy to talk more about rent and mortgage relief. We'll we'll have some new data out in the next couple of days about how much funds have gone out. But I think the key to note with this program is that we we have really tried to now have two doors, a tenant door and a landlord door, and and are really trying to spread the word. We've got a lot of marketing efforts going on. We really are trying to look at the program in terms of a racial equity lens as well. We know that disproportionately, black and brown communities have been impacted by COVID and also have have had higher rates of evictions regardless of income, even in some of the studies by the VCU Evictions Lab. So we really focused a lot on that outreach. And in our our numbers and data, it we are showing that the the funds are are really assisting black and brown communities at higher levels as as we want to make sure we are given that they're more disproportionately impacted by evictions. The other thing that we've done is is look at the household. I mean, we've we've helped around 5,000 households, but that that's, that's just the the number of units. The majority of our individuals helping those scenarios are actually children under 18. And so a lot of this assistance is also really critical to keeping our kids in the Commonwealth in their homes as they, many of them are in virtual learning or other kind of learning environments in the fall. So that's all I'll say at the moment for rent and mortgage relief. But I'm happy to take some more questions at the end of the report. The other piece that I really wanted to, that I mentioned in the memo about enterprise zones, we dealt with a technical update today on the enterprise zone regulations. I also included a link to the Joint Legislative and Audit Review Committee study on incentives overall. So that's J-LARK. And and so the enterprise zone program was one of multiple programs looked at for effectiveness and the return on investment to the Commonwealth. And so there is a a report, includes a letter from our agency with some of our thoughts on the report. And and basically, we've committed to, you know, working with J-LARK, but also our our stakeholders, our local zone administrators, the Virginia Economic Developers, and the Secretariat on on some potential legislative changes to enterprise zones in the new year. And so to, what that means for for the Board of Housing Community Development is that you all will be implementing any regulatory action. you all will be implementing any regulatory actions that come from code changes. And so there's a lot of debate on, you know, the minimum wage has changed in the state, so there may be some changes on them on the the income levels targeted. The the two main items that JLRK found on the enterprise zone program that that they analyzed was, one, they they thought the program should do a better job of targeting distressed communities. And if you look at the enterprise zone map, it's basically communities, it basically Richmond, Hampton Roads, and then Southside and Southwest Virginia, both urban and rural mix of some of our most distressed localities. And then within the program, zones within those localities focused on economic development, both job creation grants, the program, and real property improvement grants. The 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 program, so that there are some localities who are higher on the distressed category in terms of, you know, being a sounder fiscally. And one of the reasons those are locked in place is that the the current zones are locked in place until 2029, given the current code language. So that'll be a General Assembly decision on whether they want to open up the program to more localities and and create some pathways for other distressed communities to to be added on to enterprise zones. The other big focus in the study was was asking for saying that the program did not have a return on investment as high as other incentive programs. And given the scope of the study, they were focused on the state return on the investment, and the main state return on investment are personal income taxes. But the Real Property Investment Program Grant they that they analyze, the the main benefit is for the local property taxes because it's it's basically real property improvements, whether they be commercial, traded sector like manufacturing or mixed use. The program has really had a a significant impact and positive impact in our work in in distressed cities and counties, especially in placemaking efforts for downtowns with a mix of commercial, mixed-use and traded sectors. But also has been a major incentive for for manufacturing and traded sector sites that that we partner on with our Economic Development Partnership in Virginia. So I just wanted to alert you to that and definitely recommend you you take a look at the study and and know that there's there's likely a lot of work in the year ahead for the board on potential legislative changes that maybe occur in the 2021 General Assembly Session on Enterprise Zones. We at the HCD were make clear in our letter appreciation for JLRK and ability to work on some of the technical components they found and and really want to make sure that you and and our stakeholder network know we're committed to the program because it's one of the only statewide tools available to help with distressed localities in terms of fiscal distress or economic distress. The Commonwealth also identified 212 opportunity zones, and many of the opportunity zones and which is a federal tax incentive that that Rick mentioned, and he's a real expert on how to use that locally, or, you know, in the state. In that 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 zone, those zones are often by best practice overlaid with enterprise zones in terms of making deals work in a in a region where it may not have worked without some of the incentive or the or a zone or neighborhood. So I wanted to let you all know about that and happy to take questions and and that is the largest state program that you all oversee the regulatory process on. And then the last update I wanted to provide was related to the General Assembly Session and the Governor's Priorities on Housing. So we're we're in the middle of the special session of the General Assembly. The Governor did put on hold basically all new spending that was in the final budget approved back in April. But in advance of this this special session, he did realot or refund several of those new initiatives and or new increases in funding for several priorities. For our agency, the one was the broadband effort. We do staff the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, which is the state's last mile broadband program. That program, this board does not have oversight of of that program. We're happy to get input on it that we do staff the Broadband Advisory Council, which is another board we staff at the HCD now that that has oversight over the broadband efforts. But that is, that was moved from up to $50 million, up from our current amount of $19 million a year. So significant growth proposed in that program. And the House and Senate budgets that just came out on Friday both keep it at that level. So we're likely to see some increases in in the broadband effort, but never say never until the budget is signed. So we're we're but we're preparing for that. The other major historic investment was for the Housing Trust Fund. So that budget is currently at $7 million in our base budget, and the Governor's proposal would put that funding at $55 million. Right now, the House and Senate both continue that funding. The the difference being the House does require a set aside of at least 25 million of that going to rent and mortgage relief. So that, so the 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 trust fund seems to have some support in both bodies for some increases, and there may be some more mechanical and technical changes related to what the uses will be. Currently, we use, historically, we use 80% of the fund for construction loans, both of the Vibrant Communities Initiative and our Affordable and Special Needs Housing Initiative application process, and then 20% for homeless reduction grants. This board at the most recent meeting did we have the flexibility to change those percentages during the pandemic with current budget language. So you did change the percentage to 60% loans and 40% grants. And so we were we're waiting the final decision from the General Assembly. And and may, and we'll definitely have more to report in at the October 19th meeting. Hopefully, the budget will be done by then. It's that's not guaranteed, but but we'll we'll have more to report on the the Housing Trust Fund. The last to note is that under this administration, for the first time, we have staff focused on eviction prevention and diversion. And we now in the budget have a $3.3 million proposal annually to hire three new staff and to create a pilot program focused on creating the continuum of care around legal aid, sheriff's offices, social services to help prevent evictions especially before households enter the court system and create some collaborative grant funding. In essence, that was planned pre-pandemic, and we now have a statewide prevention diversion program. But this is going to really help us with the the research and best practices and the creating the local data and systems, especially in localities with high eviction rates pre-pandemic. And so that that is still both in the House and Senate budget. So you can see we have a lot going on at the HCD. We're really critical in terms of as in our mission area, in terms of the pandemic immediate emergency response, but then also the long-term solutions on recovery. And, you know, I I haven't touched too much on it, but I do want to mention too, Go Virginia is another program we have a separate board for, but they also are involved with the recovery and resilience efforts on on the economic recovery. But we we are in a in a in a growth period right now. And so I just want to thank our team who's been working really hard as we as we try to build out these new programs and and make sure that we deliver on the resources that that are entrusted to us. So with that, I will I'll take any questions and and we also have other staff members on. I I neglect, I, one of the things that in thanking the staff, I I really do know that you'll get to know our staff well. You've got to hear from Cindy, our Deputy Director for Building and Fire Regulations. A lot of her team is on today. And they are, I want to thank all of their hard work and the code development process. They have really adjusted and and kept things going and getting, in some cases, saving lots of miles of driving for officials from across the Commonwealth in in terms of now going on to this online platforms. And it's amazing amount of dollars. Sean Sean's, Sean can attest, he's he's saved a lot of miles, too. So we're learning, we're learning as we go in this environment about how to to conduct. And so I want to thank that team. Pam Kestner, Chief Deputy and Deputy of Housing, her teams with the Rent and Mortgage Relief and Housing Trust Fund, among many other things, and the Homelessness Assistance. And then you heard from Jay Grant, his team, and Rebecca's on his team as well on the community development side, both enterprise zones, community block grants. You you also know Kyle Flanders well. He does an amazing job of helping his staff and keep this me and the rest of the team on on target and staffing you all on this board. Cody Anderson as well is on. He is, he's also our helps staff this board and keep us keep us straight. So I did want to recognize the staff and and thank them for their efforts in putting this together today. So with that, I'll just see if there's any questions.
Any questions for Eric?
No, thank you, Eric, for the update.
Is there any unfinished business, Kyle? That we have not attended to?
Not that I'm aware of.
For any board member, is there any new business that they would like to bring up?
This is Keith. Two from from Keith, this is Keith. One, I know we don't publish a roster of online or anything of the board members, but with the, you know, a good amount of four new board members, Kyle, is it is it possible to get a roster and at least a contact list? I know periodically, we, you know, like to contact each other, ask a question, follow up, or whatever it may be. At least having emails and phone numbers for the board members would be helpful if if we could facilitate that, especially with the new members.
I'll be in touch with you.
Okay. And then the second one may be for Cindy, and I know that in the 2020 session of the General Assembly, they asked that the Department of Housing Community Development to convene stakeholders for the to updating the Uniform Statewide Building Code and Statewide Fire Prevention Code to address the active shooters and hostile threat that we dealt with last year. And I believe that DHC was asked to convene stakeholders representing entities from around the the Commonwealth, etc. And my question is, Cindy, how 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 are those folks going to be chosen and when will that kick off?
Well, thanks for that question, Eric. Timely question. I actually have just reached out to BML and VACO and asked them if they had folks interested in participating. Additionally, because the the initial request, as I understand it, was initiated in Stafford. We will be reaching out to Stafford Town Administrator to to see who they would like to participate in the process. And then, you know, as typical, the the last group that was included in the school safety barricade discussion, with the exception of the schools, that that issue has already been addressed. We would invite the same stakeholder group, the Virginia Fire Services Board, the Fire Prevention Association, BBCO, the Virginia Association of Architects, DGS. And I think we had a number of law enforcement entities represented also. But I did note that BML's response to who is going to participate includes many law enforcement representatives, chiefs of police, and that kind of thing. So that's that's the list as we currently have it. We're just accumulating names. So we've also had a request from a couple of industry representatives to be included in any meeting that we convene. So if you have any particular requests, please go forward to forward them to me. And we'll be sending out a doodle poll once we get that list finalized.
Okay, and I don't know if you said the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association, but certainly they'd like to participate. But I think one suggestion, certainly, that we need to, you know, look at the localities around the Commonwealth. As we all know, the Commonwealth is very diverse, and what happens in Hampton Roads, Northern Virginia, Western and Loud, I mean, Western parts of the state, and certainly the the South, the South Southwest is very different, has different needs. So I would urge that we get a cross representation representation of the entire Commonwealth. But thanks, Cindy.
You're welcome. We will certainly do our best, but we can't force people to participate.
Mr. Chair, on that one, too, I just wanted, for the new board members, I especially wanted to let you, the context on that one is that the during the proposed phase, there was a a work group that that focused on school buildings, so and looking at barricade devices with with schools. And so then the General Assembly also had the bill that Chief Johnson mentioned that he and Cindy discussed that was from Senator Stewart and Delegate Cole, both on the request of Stafford County. And and they requested that we look at this issue moving forward in addition related to other government buildings. So so that's that's what the that that issue is. And so we're we'll definitely be looking through that as Cindy mentioned.
Thank you for that, Director Johnston. Director Johnston, if I can also just ask you, I know with respect to the roster that John that Fire Chief Johnson asked for, if you could just reiterate the message about, you know, how many members it would take to have a board meeting? So and we don't want to accidentally have a board meeting, right?
Yeah, and so that's a good point, Mr. Chair. So just remember that when there's fewer or more board members, that constitutes, you know, a meeting of the board. And so just definitely you all can talk with each other. We do, but but you have to be, you know, we want to follow the open meetings laws, so you know, keep it to with someone else and don't don't add a third person into that conversation about matters of the board. And and the other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, we do, we do have a lot of stakeholders reach out that want your contact information. We, you know, those, we do, in those cases, we we ask for the the details of what they want to share with the boards that we can share with all of you. So we don't, we don't actually give out that information to for requests, but we, you know, if you all ever want to contact one of each other, we do have, we can, you know, send that information to you as a board member.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Johnston? Okay, and no other board matters. Director Johnston, if you want to speak to future board meeting dates?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you can see in your your packet and the board meeting agenda that October 9th, 19th is our next board meeting. Please do hold, you know, it's going to start at 10:00. And and again, we'll have the you know, it should be the the three by three committee by the codes and standards, and then the full board. We may have a Housing Community Development Board meeting as well. So the, as you see from the day, the board members that we just roll into each of the meetings. We'll probably need to take a couple of breaks on this this next one, though, between meetings. It's hard to predict how long our meeting will go based on, we want to make sure there's ample time for comment and discussion. So so there will be likely a lot of public comment at the next board meeting, and then a lot of discussion and during the the different parts of the code code process code. So we were asking you to hold from 10:00 to 4:00. I wouldn't make a you know, you may be, but I also wouldn't make a big plans at 4:30 that day. I mean, we're, it's a, it's a little kind of it's loose in terms of when and when, and we will try to keep it to that 10:00 to 4:00. But know that that's one of our longer board meetings. And then you'll you'll note that December 14, we're recommending holding from at least 10:00 to 2:00 for the the final adoption. Kyle, did I miss anything on the future board meetings? Okay, that that's that's all we have there, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. So it looks like that there's no other matters present impending at this point. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, great. And Kyle, I'm assuming we can do that by voice vote to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to adjourning after two and a half hours? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Take care. Take care.